And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Morabitz, our announcements.
There's two opportunities for the public to address the board. One is on agenda items. The other agenda is on non-agenda items, which set in the meeting. This is the three-fifth opportunity pursuant to report policy pursuant to Sunshine Act. It is an opportunity to comment, question and answer the board.
Okay. Wilson, good news. Pennsylvania Governor's School for the Sciences announced that Wilson Jr. Rashana Nyack has been selected as one of only 56 students in the Commonwealth to attend the Pennsylvania Governor's School for the Sciences held at the Carnegie Mellon University this summer. Rashana received a full scholarship that includes room, board, tuition, books, laboratory fees, computer fees, and activity fees. In addition, Junior Sylvia Burts was selected as an alternate for this program. And this year, at the regional middle school computer fair, our Southern kids placed in the following places: Jessica Reichart, animation, first place; Matt Fiorini and Sarah Schaub, computer logo, second place; and Caitlin Conklin, digital movie, second place. Jessica will be advancing to the state competition on May 21st with her animation. Congratulations. This evening, we have a presentation, Lucy Calkins and Veronica Andes.
Good evening, and thank you, School Board, for the opportunity to present to you this evening our new writing program that we've just implemented at the elementary level, K to five. We are currently looking at also implementing this six through eight in our middle school. So it's an exciting night to be able to present this to you. So thank you very much for inviting me to be able to do this. The very first thing I want to share with you is your packets that are in front of you. I prepared information for you that you can look at, at your leisure. The PowerPoint presentation is in there, as well as an overview of the writing program. And then on the left-hand side tucked in there are some student samples for you to look at. I have them all labeled, so you'll see things from kindergarten through fourth grade. And then it's my pleasure tonight to have some fifth-grade students here to talk about their experience with the writing workshop. I figured you probably want to hear from the kids rather than hearing it all from me. So my presentation will be very brief, but I do want a chance for the students to talk about their experience with the writing workshop through this year. So again, thank you for this opportunity. When we started this process of implementing a writing workshop, we first went to the research, and we realized that we really did need to implement writing, and in a very structured format, starting with kindergarten. And so we looked to the researchers, people like Donald Greaves, people like Lucy Calkins, and then we adapted her units of study, which incorporate narrative, it incorporates informational writing, and it also has a research component, as well as opinion and argument. So we really looked at the research and realized that we really needed something like this in our program. We then knew that we needed to give ample time to the teachers and the students to have a schedule that included writing, and so we tweaked the elementary schedule to include a writing block, so that there would be 45 to 50 minutes across the board for just solitary writing, which, again, we felt was very important to implement. We knew that students needed that extensive opportunity to write. We knew that they needed to write about things they cared about, they needed to have some choice. But we also know that the PSSA test is something that we're held accountable to, and we wanted to make sure that we were aligned with that assessment piece as well. We also knew that we needed to have explicit instruction, and so we've been able to implement some professional development. In fact, today, I worked with fifth-grade teachers, continuing that professional development. And then we also know that critical feedback is really important, so we did some common scoring as teams of teachers across all grade levels, so the feedback could be consistent. Also, we know that writing not only is a block by itself, but it does really sequence itself with reading, and we also know that writers are also thinkers, learners, and it definitely extends into the reading as well. So we know that by implementing writing, the payoff will be much more than what we see on a report card just for a writing score. We knew that we needed the components of the writing workshop, so what we did was we adopted this format, so that at the beginning, all of the teachers are using mentor texts that were supplied with the units of study that we purchased as a resource. But since the time that we purchased the materials, the teachers have gone well beyond the few sources that they were given with their initial packet. The librarians have been very helpful with this piece as well, providing additional mentor texts that can be used. And these are examples of what really good, solid writing looks like as models. We then do a 10- to 15-minute mini lesson where we work on a real specific focus area, and then the kids have time from between 25 and 30 minutes to do their own independent writing. We have a lot of conferencing time. We even have some guided writing if small groups of students need additional help. And I've been fortunate enough to work with Mr. Dusko and do some of this workshopping together as a co-teaching situation this year, and it's been great fun and great progress that I've seen with these students. Then they have some time at the end for sharing, and each unit also includes a celebration time, which I also think is really important. Some of the highlights of this unit of study I already talked about, it does include opinion, information, and narrative writing, all of which are assessed on PSSA. The whole program is aligned to common core, so the sequence, the skills, the concepts are all aligned. It also asks students to put themselves in the role of a scientist or a historian, so we're crossing many, many disciplines as well. And they do get to practice quite a bit. They do a lot of writing, and they do a lot of revisions and a lot of editing to come to that final piece. There is differentiation in vertical articulation. Lucy Calkins' rubrics include progressions, so we can see what they should be doing at their grade level, and also, if they're not quite at grade level, where are they before that, and where will they go after that? So differentiation is already built in. It also uses a variety of fiction and nonfiction texts, so we get that variety in the reading as well. And the piece that we were missing in some instances before was a research component, which is now built into every single unit across all grade levels, so there is research involved as well. But you probably don't want to hear me talking. You probably want to hear the girls talking. And so what I'd like them to do is they'll be coming up, and they were prompted a bit to answer these three questions on what they've learned about themselves as a writer, what they like about the writing time, and how they feel writing can help them in the future. So Amy, I'm going to have you come up first, and make sure you speak into the microphone so they can hear you. So talk to us about what you've learned about yourself as a writer.
I've learned that I'm a really good writer, and I might not always think it, but I have really good stories deep inside of me, and that I might always not think it, but I do have self-confidence, and if that I keep writing, my self-confidence will keep building up and up, and that I can continue as being a good writer.
And Amy is someone who's tougher on herself than I ever could have been, aren't you? She was always one who was looking for, "What else can I write?" What do you like about the writing time?
What I like about the writing time is that sometimes when it's informational and persuasive, you can't always get the facts from right inside of you, so you sometimes get to use your resources around you, but not for the PSSAs. But when you get to use your resources, you can learn about what you're writing, and you get to write, so you have like two great things that you get to do at once, because you get to learn what you're writing about while you're researching it, and then you get to write about it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Amy. I appreciate it. Courtney, you're next. Can you talk to me about how you feel writing's going to help you, or how it already has helped you in other subjects, not just during the writing time?
It can help me, like during the PSSAs, we had to write, I don't remember, it was two, it was two different things, because we had two days. But it helped me, because if I didn't really know how to write very well, then I wouldn't know, like I probably, I wouldn't have written a very good story.
Okay. So it helped you on the test. Anyplace else in any of your other subjects that you think it might have helped you?
It helps us on the science tests sometimes, or the social studies test.
Okay, very good. And what have you learned about yourself as a writer?
That if I have an idea and I think about it more, then I can think of a really good story.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to tell us about what you like about the writing block? No, she's done. She's had enough. Amalia, you're next. Talk to me about what you've learned about yourself as a writer.
I've learned that it's difficult for me to choose the topics, because there are so many to choose and write about, and once I've chose a topic, I can, I'm able to write, think of the details by closing my eyes and, closing my eyes and... and connecting my story to someone or something special.
All right, thank you. And what do you like about writing time, other than trying to get those good ideas out there, which you do a good job of?
I like that there's a certain amount of time, and when there's a certain amount of time, it seems like, for me, it feels like a mission that I've got incomplete, and it helps make me focus more.
All right, thank you. And McKenna? Last but not least, can you talk to me about what you like about your writing time?
I like that we can be creative on some of the pieces, and that we have enough time, the time that we need, and that we can, if we just picture what we're doing, that it can help us with the writing. Like the Five Alive is a technique that Mr. Dusko taught us that kind of helps, so I really like that.
And did you learn something new about yourself as a writer, too?
I learned that I'm a good writer, and that if I can't, if I can't write a story, like if I don't have enough details, that if I close my eyes and I try to picture the moment, that the details start to come to me, and that I can write a better story.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions for our fifth graders?
I'd just like to say I think they did a lovely job, and thank you so much for sharing that.
I have one question. Are you sure that you're tougher on yourselves than Mrs. Andes? I hear she's a really tough teacher.
I do have a bit of a tough reputation, but these girls were up to the challenge. The very first day I walked in, I said, "You realize I taught ninth-grade honors English?" So today, you guys are all going to be ninth graders, and what did we learn how to do as fifth graders? What kind of thesis statements did we write? Parallel thesis statements in fifth grade. We were pretty impressed, weren't we? So...
Her toughness will pay off. It will.
And girls, I taught Mr. Dusko when he was in junior high. So you've got a good egg there. Very good. Great job. I thought you spoke very well. And we've heard, Mrs. Andes, we've heard great things about this writing program. The kids are so much more comfortable, and so much more fluid in the writing, which is outstanding.
Mr. Dusko has some closing words.
You know, I remember when I became passionate about writing. It was in, I think, eighth grade, and ironically enough, it was when Mr. Bradburn, our grandfather, said, "Dusko, you're a good writer." And it clicked with me, and I said, "Wow, writing can be powerful, and this is a computer class." So in my 11 years of teaching fifth-grade writing, I always had, you know, this feeling that fifth graders could really do a lot, they could push the limits, and I always set my expectations high. And then with the advent of this writing program this year, it was just validation through all the research and all the information that Lucy Calkins provides, that fifth graders can do, much, can do great things. And in fact, the sky is the limit. And, you know, I like the expression, "No more excuses," because the things that these four girls have done, and other members of my classroom, it's just amazing to do. And we had an expression, thanks to Mrs. Andes, that we're in ninth grade when she walks in the room, and during my writing block, you know, we were writing like ninth-grade writers, and it's just, it was, you know, as a teacher, it was just very, really rewarding. And, you know, I think Wilson's lucky to have this system in place and moving forward.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Andes, Mr. Dusko, ladies. Great job. We always enjoy hearing about the programs and the successes that we have with our students here, so thank you for being here, and thank you, parents, for coming. I need a motion for the approval of the April 4th, 2014 minutes. Mr. Ehrlich, is there a second? Mr. Martin, any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number one, is there a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report, Investment Report, and General Fund Financial Reports? Mr. Ehrlich, seconded by Mr. Hop. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
Item number two, payment of bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills of the General Fund 2013-14, $1,780,376.09, out of the Capital Reserve Fund, $527,220.66, and the 2013-B Construction Fund, $1,365,848.61? Is there a motion for the payment of those bills? Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Martin, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
Item number three, financial reports. Is there a motion to approve the food service, childcare, and activity accounts from Wilson West Middle School, Southern Middle School, and the Senior High School all of March 2014? Mr. Ehrlich, is there a second? Mr. Martin, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
All right, any communications?
None.
All right, item number four, ratification approval of the following field trip. Request approval of the revised field trip request as attached. Is there a motion to approve that item? Mr. Martin, seconded by Mrs. Reed, any questions or comments? Roll call, our consent item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item five, superintendent's report. Dr. Ruth?
Thank you, President. A greeting, very typical report this evening, much of it dealing with personnel resignations and support of hourly teachers and changes in status, and that's my report for the evening.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's report? Mr. Ehrlich, seconded by Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
Under consent items, 6.1, accept with gratitude the following donations: new books from Scholastics to Mr. Musser's fourth-grade classroom library from an anonymous donor, and books, educational supplies, and furnishings from the Green Valley Home Association Scholastic Book Fair to Green Valley Elementary for the use in classrooms and the library. Is there a motion to accept that item? Mr. Ehrlich, second, Mrs. Reed, any questions or comments? Consent item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item seven, human resources. 7.1, request approval of the resignation of Kathleen Modica, teacher, per the agreement of release dated April 15, 2014. Is there a motion to approve that item? Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Ehrlich, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
All right, under pupil services, 8.1, request permission to ratify the contract with Hogan Learning Academy to provide educational services to three special education students at the rate of $330 per day, including all related services, beginning March 17, March 31, and April 3, respectively, and ending June 5, 2014. Is there a motion to approve that item? Mr. Ehrlich, seconded by Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Mrs. Reed?
Is that $330 per day per student, or per three students?
That would be per student. Is that correct? Yes.
Per student, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
All right, under technology and media, 9.1, request approval to sell 39 MacBook Airs to double-click computers. West Reading for $21,450, or $550 per device. Is there a motion to approve that item? Mr. Metzger, is there a second? Mr. Wolf, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
Under operations, 10.1, request permission to approve the following change orders to the Naterium contract. There are a number of them listed. This total change order percentage for the project is .5892 percent. Is there a motion to approve those change orders? Mr. Ehrlich, is there a second? Mrs. Reed, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
Under finance, 11.1, request approval of the budget transfers dated March 13 through April 16, 2014. And 11.2, request approval to submit the following delinquent accounts to the Berks County Tax Claim Bureau: four from Spring Township, one from Sinking Spring, two from Lower Heidelberg, and five from Spring Township, all 2013 July interim tax bills. Is there a motion to approve those two items? Mr. Martin, is there a second? Mr. Ehrlich, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
Under curriculum and staff development, 12.1, request approval of a supplemental book to be used in the AP Psychology course, "A User's Guide to the Brain: Perception, Attention, and the Four Theaters of the Brain." Is there a motion to approve that item? Mrs. Reed, is there a second? Mr. Ehrlich, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
Under childcare, 15.1, request to approve to contract with Dolan Construction for the repair, ceiling, and line stripping of the back parking lot at Berkshire Heights. Cost of the project approximately $2,025. All costs will be paid for by Wilson Childcare, no cost to the district. And 15.2, request to approve to contract with Franklin Flooring for classrooms five, six, seven, and eight. They're located upstairs. Approximate cost of the project, $24,891. All costs will be paid for by Wilson Childcare, no cost to the district. Is there a motion to approve those items? Mr. Ehrlich, is there a second? Mr. Martin, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hop?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Metzger?
Yes.
Mr. Negreany?
Yes.
Seven-four, none against.
Under policies, this is a second reading of policy 709.1, and the second reading of policy number 810.2. There is no vote this evening. And we move on to committee reports. Berks Career and Technology, Mr. Metzger?
Not much to report this evening. We haven't had a meeting of the JOC since we last met. Our next meeting is scheduled for this upcoming Wednesday at 6:30 and 7 o'clock at BCTC West
BCIU, Mrs. Reed?
Okay, BCIU redesigned their website. They also did a resolution. Apparently, the state of Pennsylvania has put in some new regulations, which only the state of Pennsylvania out of 50 states has, and because of these regulations, they have not paid the medical assistance to the BCIU for two years. It's part of their budget. They were expecting to get it, and they suddenly just put in a new regulation. So federal government pays the state government, the state government hasn't paid the BCIU, and they haven't paid Wilson. So I guess somebody's just kind of sitting there with the state government. It amounts to $28 million that they haven't paid, and if it goes past May 10 of this year and it's not paid, it will never be paid. It's gone. So they did a resolution and sent it in saying, basically, "Please do something and get us that money." This is special ed money for children with disabilities, and it has to do with money for physical therapy and things like that, that they're required to do, and now suddenly the monies aren't there because of a restriction that they've put on. Has to do with insurance companies. They suddenly decided there was a condition that anybody who receives medical assistance has to have the insurance company give a blanket letter of denial, and if they don't do that, they don't get the money. So I see that as kind of a major problem, so they're trying to work on it. But at any rate, they sent a resolution in, and I think you should know that there are those problems going on, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Berks CIT, no report. Curriculum, Mrs. Reed?
Okay, we are looking for a director of curriculum. I have put down the schedule for the interviews, starting with 16 on April 22, and then finally, coming down to the final round interviews on May 13, and hopefully, we will have a candidate on our agenda for the May 19 meeting. They're also working on department chairs, curriculum liaisons, and teacher mentors. The second thing is that they are going to train our pair professionals, of which we have 96 in-house instead of through the BCIU. Apparently, this, there's been some scheduling conflicts where people couldn't go, and so if they do it in-house, there will be no scheduling conflicts, because they'll make certain of that. And then the next thing was the student learning objectives will be online next year, and the teachers will have the first quarter to work with it, and then part of it is you work with your class, and then you make a determination of what you think they can achieve. Every class is different, so every class is not going to achieve exactly the same amount, so they need to work with their students, and then set their goals. And that'll be starting next year. And the psychology book, we already discussed, and that's already been passed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Extracurricular, Mr. Wolf?
There's a report in our agenda, just a couple highlights, both our boys and girls' track and field team, as well as our boys lacrosse team, both hold perfect records right now, but most of our athletic teams, as we head into the second half of their seasons, are lining up pretty nicely to be able to participate in playoffs or league titles. So it's been a good spring so far. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Facilities, the board earlier this evening had an opportunity to take a tour of the Naterium that's currently under construction. As Dr. Ruth has stated over and over again, everything appears to be on budget and on time, set to open in the beginning of June. So a lot of mix of old and new in that facility, and looking forward to the opening of that facility. Our next facilities meeting is going to be moved to May the 1st, currently slated for 4:30, although we may move that to 4 o'clock. I'll be in touch with everyone about that, but that is my report. Finance, Mr. Ehrlich?
We had a finance committee meeting prior to the board meeting tonight. We discussed the budget for the district, as well as the budget for foods, as well as the budget for food services, and also an update on some bond refinancing. We will be bringing the preliminary budget to the board in May for preliminary approval. That's my report.